The hour is 5:30. Welcome to the regular meeting of your Danville City Commission for this Monday, July the 24th, 2017. I will ask Commissioner Terry if she will lead us in prayer, please. As soon as she finds her prayer.
Let's pray. God Almighty, we thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. We ask that you help us to act with character and conviction, to listen with understanding and goodwill, and to speak with charity and restraint. Give us the spirit of service and guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to listen with humility, open minds and spirits. Renew our spirits to appreciate the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. In your goodness and love, amen.
Amen. Thank you, ma'am. We have in our midst today to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, the Chairperson of the Boyle Landmark Trust and Finance Officer for the Boyle Fiscal Court, Mr. Jacob Pankey. Jacob, can you do it from there? You want... No, you come on up here. We want to show you off that Brooks Brothers sport cut you got on there.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yep. You can have a key to the city there, Mr. Pankey. You're welcome, sir.
And he got the purple tie memo, too.
I know. I'm matching it down.
Thank you, Jacob. We are with a quorum minus Commissioner Sarris, who told us he would be out today. Commissioner, you have before you the agenda, and if it meets with your approval, just kind of nod or say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll move right along. We're in the section of our meeting called Hear the Public, and this is to hear any comments from the public on any item that is on our agenda. There'll be a section later on in our meeting where we'll ask... I'd like the public to comment on any item that might be otherwise not on our agenda. Mr. Hahn, good evening.
I'll wait later, but I gotta leave. I got another meeting, 6 o'clock. But I want to speak about this ordinance, 1898, sewer rate change. I suppose y'all getting ready to raise our sewer rates. It just was a lot like thing too long ago. I believe y'all trying to bankrupt the citizens of Danville, you know, raising so many taxes, man. But y'all think that we have enough taxes to pay. And I'm sure I'm not the only one to feel the same way about these tax rates, man. And he just put a tax on the insurance policies, too, you know. So, you know, my insurance policy for my home now is $100 more for paying y'all taxes per year, you know. So, I'm an old man, retired. I can't work very long, so, you know, it's putting a burden on me paying the taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Hahn. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move right into our business. Item one is the approval of the minutes from two previous meetings, that being June the 29th and July the 10th. Chair will entertain a motion to approve both, unless otherwise noted, you'd like to break them apart.
I'll for both approve the minutes of June 29th and July the 10th, 2017, as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. Any further additions or corrections? Seeing none, Chair, recall the question. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item two is a banner request from our fine folks at the barbecue festival. I don't know, Cindy, if there's much that you need to say unless you want to.
No, you know, we just added information about the new location. The size will be the same. We, you know, everything's the same as it was last year, just with the new info.
And as we always ask in these matters, I assume this meets with staff's approval.
And we're going to run it for the four weeks like we did... we do every year, same thing.
Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to ask you to state the new location for the record.
Ah, yes. It'll be at Wilderness Trail Distillery on Lebanon Road in Danville.
Thank you.
I move for approval of the banner request from the Kentucky State Barbecue Festival.
Thanks, Commissioner Cottle. How about a second, somebody?
Second.
Thank you, Chris Atkins. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you all.
Looks good.
Item three is the new City of Danville website and a presentation.
I hope that's the board coming down behind me.
Something's coming down.
Let me just begin the discussion of this to say that we have, for some period of time now, worked together to try to improve our webpage. It's important to our community, important to visitors, and important to our citizens in terms of being able to get services or to request those of the city. Alex Carney, our IT staff, was instrumental, really, in doing the majority of work on this, and I think we are indebted to him for spending a lot of hours and using tablets that he has developed over a period of time to help us move to the next generation of webpage. So, I want to thank Alex before we begin this.
He's a third of us.
Well, we're a mining group of three right now, so, Alex.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. Some of you have seen, we have a new website for the City of Danville. I want to take a few minutes to go over the new website, the layout, some of its features, and answer any questions you all may have. So, without much further ado, there it is. First thing I wanted to discuss was the homepage itself. As you see, there are some similarities as far as the items that are on the current website that were also on our older website. That's the news and event sections. We tinkered with a couple of different design elements, and originally did not have these elements on the homepage, but we felt that they were important for the community and the users of the website. After getting some feedback, we decided to incorporate them. Also, just like the old website, we had some quick action buttons that we have here on the left for making online payments, service requests, finding jobs, meetings agendas, community videos, things of that nature. We also have at the very bottom, which they're kind of hard to see, but we'll wait for feedback before we change anything, but we've got a link to our Facebook page, our Twitter page, and then our YouTube channel as well. Those are down along the bottom footer, so. We'll go ahead and move into the secondary pages. Actually, before I do that, I forgot. I have to mention the mega menus, the menus at the top. We kind of boiled down all of the different reasons why or groups of people that would be coming to visit the website, including businesses and community being the first two, visiting, of course, being third, services that the city provides or links to services that may be part of the county or be a shared committee, city and county. And then, of course, government, which covers all of our boards, committees, and various other government-related things. So, you can also see in those menus that we have some quick action buttons within the menu themselves, if there's something specific that you're looking for, and, of course, we'll update those as we see a need, so. Moving into the secondary pages, just took this one as an example from the Finance Department, but secondary pages, menu is still present. The logo that's here in the top left, oops, sorry about that, is clickable, which will take you right back to the homepage. But additionally, down along the left, there's a breakout of other things in where you happen to be on the website that might also interest you. So, in addition to budget archives where we currently are, you'll see it's filed under Budget Process, and if we go into that page, it shows us Budget Process and breaks down exactly where it's located. Also, in addition to that, we have what are called breadcrumbs here at the top, which let people know exactly how they got to the page that they're located, in case they're curious or if they want to backtrack and look at annual budgets or finance or services, whatever the subcategory may be. Also, as another example of a secondary page, this is the Streetscape Committee, and you can see we've added a map feature to a lot of our pages, so that if there's a need to call out a specific location, we can do that. So, for instance, with the Streetscape Committee and all of the committees, we've indicated where they meet by using Google Maps, and you can actually just come right into the map itself and click on the location, which will direct you to a page about the location, including address, phone number, and then, of course, you can click Get Directions, which will take you to Google Maps, so you can type in your address, and it'll take you directly Additionally, we've used maps in, for example, the Parks and Recreation Department. We decided to call out all the different parks in Danville, since we do have so many great parks. We've listed them down below, and again, they're shown on a Google map there, so people can see. So, that's the website in a nutshell. We also have a service request system that will be coming online here soon. That's for reporting potholes or neighborhood concerns or anything that citizens happen to want to report on. As of right now, it's just a form, so that we're still able to field those requests from the community, but if there is a... I'm sorry. The service request system will be online shortly, so that we can better track those and get location information based on each one of those reports that we receive, so. Do y'all have any questions? I take that as a good sign.
I just wanted to comment that I poked around in the website the other day, and it's much more inviting, and I love that you have the pictures of Danville on there, and it is a lot more user-friendly than the last one. I felt like that website was kind of cold, for lack of a better word, and this is really nice, and it's very user-friendly.
And about the photos that you mentioned, we had an exhaustive search for good photos, because what we really needed were very large, high-quality photos, but I think we got some really great ones. Special thanks to Pam Wright and the Heart of Danville for helping us out with some of those, so.
It's... You did a nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope we record the question today. It's really nice to go straight there, fill it out, and it's done.
Yep. Absolutely.
On your map of the downtown, you list some places of business. My only concern would be, how do we decide which places of business we're going to highlight?
What businesses specifically? Because we tried to stay neutral and not mention any businesses, but I will say, under the visiting section, any of the information that's listed here, as opposed to keeping two different repositories, they actually link to either the EDP's website or Downtown Danville for the Heart of Danville. I can go into the maps, and we can take a look, so I can see exactly what you might be talking about. Let's see. Might just be easier to type it in. Yep, there we go. Actually, I'll go to a more specific map.
Yeah, there's another map you had up a moment ago, the downtown area.
Oh, okay. It was one of the ones that I had.
There it goes.
Okay.
Like that.
Oh, was it the committee one? Oh, I see what you mean. I'm sorry. The data that's pulled there is just pulled directly from Google, so unfortunately, we can't really control what it shows. I can check with our website design company to make sure that if we choose to drop locations from that, we may have the capability. I just know that if you were on Google's website and you zoomed in on City Hall, that's basically what it would show you in the area.
And I appreciate that, but to the average user, that's not Google's map, that's ours.
Right. I understand that.
So, that's what I'm saying.
Yep. We can definitely check into that.
Nice work.
Thank you very much.
Much improved, and how do we get the word out that so much of this information is now at people's fingertips?
Well, we can use social media that we currently have, our Facebook page, our Twitter. We also use the website to make sure that we promote ourselves. Same goes through our YouTube channel as well. There are a few things that we can do to let the public know, but those are the best ways that I can think of off the top of my head.
Videos that you referenced, does that take us into YouTube? Is that actually where we're seeing the video?
There are two different video modules that we have. One of them was put together by a company's name, which escapes me, but it's promotional material for the city. If you're on the website and you click on Community Videos, it takes you to a landing page where you have the option to go view the city YouTube channel or to view those videos, the self-promoting Danville videos. So, if you click on YouTube, it will take you directly to our YouTube channel. And just so everyone knows, our YouTube channel features all of our videos, including this one. Any video that we record, whether it's here at City Hall or elsewhere, we edit or I edit it, upload it to YouTube, so that it's accessible by anyone, so, FYI.
I'm just kind of curious. Any other communities have... do all this?
I imagine there are. I like to think that, you know, since I started here, I wanted to make sure that I promoted Danville as much as I could. I thought a new website would be one of those ways, a YouTube channel would be one of those ways. And thankfully, we already had a good amount of social media presence in place when I started, so it wasn't a whole lot I had to do, but, you know, we worked hard to make sure that we show how much we like our city, love our city, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments? Once again, thanks, Alex. Item four is an update on 311 West Main Street. Ms. Lester?
Good evening. Just wanted to let you know that everything is going as we would like it to. The property owner's been there working every day this week, and will continue work this week, and is meeting with us, working with the building inspector, so everything is on track, so just wanted to let you know that.
That's what we like.
And also, the segue into the City Manager's Report, just to let you know that we have gotten our design guidelines from the contractor, so he'll be talking to you about that, but we'll be sending those to you and the planning and zoning for approval, so.
Thank you, ma'am. We're now at item five, City Manager Report. Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir. Just to continue that conversation that Richard started about the Architectural Review Board's approval, really, of the recommendation of approval, the draft, AHB Design Guidelines, it occurred to me that we should have, perhaps, a workshop or we could have some presentation to the City Commission from either staff or our consultants or maybe members of our HB Committee and get into a question-and-answer session, so that your questions could be addressed. And if that is the case or the direction you would like to proceed, I guess I would suggest that we consider doing so on August 17th, that Thursday of August 17th, perhaps our usual time at 5:30 in the afternoon, if that's a convenient time for the Commission to meet.
What say ye, Commissioner? What time do you say, again?
Well, our usual meeting time is at 5:30 for the convenience of the public, just as we start here tonight. Okay. Well, great. Well, without further ado, we'll just set that meeting up and circulate those draft guidelines to you and proceed with that meeting.
Okay.
The other general topic I wanted to just discuss with you for our common understanding and perhaps the understanding of the public as well, is the process that we're intending to follow with regard to updating our EDP governing structure or the board structure and the bylaws regarding that organization. We've completed, of course, pretty much a year's work or longer of updating our strategic plan for economic development with the help of RKG, and part of that process was to restructure the board to be a more effective singular board to do economic development. And so, we had a meeting of our working group last Thursday, I believe it was, where we talked about ways in which we might agree to structure those bylaws, where we would have equal representation on that board, equal in terms of local government representation and three from the city, three from the county, three from the industrial board, as I recall, plus perhaps, well, not perhaps, we'd have the other two cities represented as well, Princeton City and Perriville, and with the additionally, three additional representatives at large being elected by those other members on the board. So, that's the process that we sort of informally agreed to last Thursday, which was reported in our newspaper, and which we're proceeding with in terms of writing those bylaws. Now, we have a calendar that we intend and hope to comply with in terms of getting through that reorganization, and that being that currently or through July 27th, the proposed bylaws will be distributed to all of the current EDP partners for their review, their board or their attorney. So, we're in the review process right now, and then at their next meeting on August the 16th, the EDP will, in fact, consider any final changes or come up with what will be a final effort at a draft for approval by all the EDP partners. So, that would mean that in August, at our August 28th meeting, we would likely then have for us a recommended set of final bylaws for your consideration and hopeful approval at the end of August. And then, on September 11th, because there are so many partners involved in terms of the current structure, having to agree to step down or have a new role, we would also have the alternative date of September 11th, if we don't complete it on August the 28th, to approve from the city government point of view, the new bylaws. And then, on their September meeting, September 20th, the EDP would give then consideration and final approval of the bylaws, as all the partners have approved to that point in time, hopefully. So, you can see this is rather a long process, and then, on October 18th, the EDP will meet again in their following month meeting to, with all the approved representatives on the board, including the three to be agreed to by the City Commission as part of that new board. And I would presume that the City Commission, as with the county, would need to approve their direct representatives on that board in early October, at their meeting on October 9th or 10th. 10th, I think, is the county meeting. And so, then, once that is agreed to by the City Commission, the EDP board would meet with those nominating members as they're called, because they would have the power as a body then to nominate the three remaining members on October the 18th and to elect those three at-large citizen members and complete that restructured board. So, I'm going through that in some detail, so that we'll know that it's going to be a little bit of a process before that new board will be in place, hopefully on October 18th, with new bylaws to govern that organization. Is that pretty clear? It's probably more clear for the Commission than it might be for the public, because it does flow through some additional dates, but that's the process, and so I just wanted to say that we have made a lot of progress, I think, in terms of getting to this point and looking at how we can be more effective as a community and as a EDP board with a reconstituted board and bylaws. And those were, as largely recommended by the RKG group, although our EDP steering group did make a few tweaks to that last week, as we considered how representative and diverse that board might need to be.
Well, Ron, from reading the newspaper report of the meeting, you and the mayor should be commended for holding up the City Commissioners' end of the process and for the results that you've gained thus far. And my question is, I'm excited about the 333, but then the fact that the city has the opportunity for three appointments, there are really no restrictions on who the city may appoint to those three positions. It could be you, it could be the mayor, it could be the Commissioner, it could be a citizen of Danville. We're sort of open to, you know, that new economic development expert that just moved to town might be one of our representatives on the board if we so desire.
You're correct in terms of that the three appointees from the city can be anyone that the City Commission feels best represents or will represent the city government as a whole, I think. I would say, in response to your congratulations, and I appreciate those kind of words, as I'm sure the mayor does, but I would say, as we've gone through this process over the last 12 months or longer, there's been a sort of a community searching over hearts and minds, and I think there was a collective response, saying, well, let's go into this with sort of an equal opportunity, and begin that you chapter on kind of a level playing field, if I can say that.
Well, it's very obvious that that's what the community wanted, so I just think it's a great outcome. And I know other folks have been involved from the city standpoint, but I know where the heavy load has been carried, so that's why I said thanks.
Thank you. The next topic I'll briefly touch upon is the Governor's Local Issues Conference will be held August 23 through 25th at the Galt House in Louisville. Any City Commissioner that wishes to attend should contact staff. I've gone to that, and some over the years, not maybe consistently, but I think increasingly it's important for cities to be represented there, as well as the counties, they're gearing their program to benefit both city and county governments, so I would encourage your attendance if your schedule permits, and contact our city clerk if you need assistance in registration or hotel accommodations if you're going to stay up.
Does that operate sort of like the KLC conference? Are there, like, breakout sections, or are there... Is it just...
It's very similar, I would say, in terms of workshops and general sessions and great speakers and other activities that are of interest.
Okay.
And the final point in my report tonight is the announcement of the dedication of the city's water treatment plant after our year and a half, two-year renovation of that, and we have scheduled that for Thursday, August 31st at noon. We are still finalizing the program, and we'll be sending out announcements, and...
It says 28th on the paper.
Yeah.
It was revised once again, and maybe your paper did not get the revision, but we've had... We had a conflict with 28th with the Kentucky Water Conference in Kentucky, and so we moved it to accommodate some of those water professionals that would like to be present.
It's the 31st at noon?
31st at noon, yes. Apologize for any confusion in that. There were two memos that were drafted today. So, that's an exciting time to wrap up that water treatment plant renovation, and we look forward to that. So, that concludes my report, unless there are particular comments or questions.
I have a conflict on the August 23rd through 25th for the Governor's Conference, so I would hope other Commissioners would certainly make every attempt to attend.
I'm going to see if I can go to that.
Anything else for Mr. Scott? Seeing none, we'll move into the section we call Hear the Public, public's opportunity to speak on any issue that is not on the agenda, as long as it's not illegal or immoral. to speak on any issue that is not on the agenda, as long as it's not illegal or immoral.
Oh, I should sit down. I just wanted to say hello and make sure y'all know who Jamie Payton is. I think most of you do, but she's with us at the CBB. She's been for about a year now. She started in the visitor's center, but she's just been great to work with, has a lot of energy and desire to pitch in. So, she's doing our social media. She's actually our digital media, uh, digital marketing coordinator, so.
Super.
So, I really enjoying being here. I hope that everyone's been seeing what's been put out on Destination Danville Facebook page. Really excited about it. It's a fun job, you can't beat it. So, thanks for having me.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for introducing her, Jennifer. Anyone else? Going once, going twice. Moving right along to Commissioner's comments. I'll begin by thanking staff for an informative meeting about 911 and particularly the opportunity to see that facility. It is a secure site, so you don't get the opportunity very often, and it is truly impressive. And, and it's impressive even though we're dealing with equipment that is now 20 years old, which in technology terms is Stone Age. Those are dedicated folks, and it was, it was, it was a very informative morning. I'd like to dovetail off of Mr. Scott's report about EDP. I think, I think we have a new opportunity in this community. Change is never easy. Change is uncomfortable, but in this day and age, you need to embrace change because it's, it's going to change with and without you. And I think that is a recognition of that and conclusion to which everyone arrived. Council, they helped in that. I think it's, I think it's a wonderful new day, and it couldn't come at a moment too soon. So, I really think a few years from now, we're going to look back on this event and say that was, that was a watershed event. I really do believe that, and it's going to be fun. Finally, I will ask my fellow commissioners to spend some serious time reading the RKG report. There's a lot in there, and I think we're going to need to be focused on that in the coming years. So, end of my comments.
Are you speaking at Rotary?
Yes. Are you coming?
Oh, we're going to try. Is it this week?
That's this Friday.
Okay, this Friday, the mayor speaking at Rotary. And I, I don't think I did this at the last month that I meant to, but I wanted to brag on Earl Coffey for just a minute. He, he addressed the garden club. I think it's been, I think it's been a few months ago now, but I've had several ladies tell me what a great job he did, and, and they, they thought it was going to be above their head, but Earl does a really nice job of bringing things down to, to the regular person's level. And he talked about the water plan and how we've gotten this far, and, and I think you just talked about, you know, engineering in general, how it works at the city, and, but you did a great job, so just wanted to give that recognition. He behaved himself, is what I, what I heard.
I was going to give congratulations to, you know, Kyle Poland, he swam the Emaus Channel, and for an encore, he decided he would swim around Manhattan.
Yeah.
What's it called, the Seven Bridges Swim or something?
Yeah.
He did that this past weekend. Sorry?
Twenty bridges.
Sorry, I shorted him several. But it's around the whole island, so it's a long way.
I think it was like seven or eight hours was the time. I saw that briefly also.
Twenty, twenty-eight miles.
That is remarkable.
Did, did you notice the way he glowed in the dark after he came back? Something about, something about the water and East River, I don't know. I do want also, like Commissioner Terry, I, I was not there at Rotary when Earl Coffey spoke. That is a tough group to speak to. They are, they are, they are not very forgiving, and by all accounts, they learned a lot about our water treatment facility, and that's a good thing, Earl. It's a good thing. Anything else? We'll move right into financial and the payment of the bills, which you have in front of you is item six, do I hear motion to accept the bills as presented?
Move to accept payment of the bills as presented in the amount of $286,461.75.
Do I hear a second?
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item seven is Resolution Number 2017-07-24-01. This is a cemetery lot buyback from Nancy Kleckner in the amount of $624.
I'll for motion to approve Resolution 2017-07-24-01 as presented.
Like Commissioner Atkins, how about a second?
Second.
Thanks, Commissioner Cottle, discussion?
I just wonder why it's 624 instead of 625 or 620.
We believe she was out of town at that time when they bought it, and that was the rate for that section out of town, so.
Just curious.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item eight is Resolution Number 2017-07-24-02. This is in regards to certified local government grant agreements. Ms. Lester, welcome back. Ms. Wagner?
I have asked Ms. Wagner to help with this because Ms. Wagner was very instrumental in working through a lot of this grant stuff with me, and I wouldn't have gotten through it without her, so I'm going to let her explain this to you.
Hello.
Hello.
Long time no see. I have a resolution here, and it breaks down, if you have that in front of you, two different grants, and this is the funding through the Certified Local Government Program. The first section is in the amount of $6,700. Do you see that? And it sort of explains that it's not really clear. This is more than just an app for a mobile tablet, and I, I just want to make sure you understand that it is a website with the ability for citizens and developers and, and preservationists to really tack into these properties and learn about them, what the age is, what the style is, what the, the history of the building is. So, you'll notice there that the amount is $6,700. The grant agreement that you approved, the original application, was for $6,000 of funding and $4,100, I think it was, in the match. As part of the Certified Local Government and us being Danville, we were offered an opportunity to take a different path, and that is to go with a different company than what we had applied for. And instead of going with Ruskin Arc, which is what you, you approved, this is a Kentucky-based program that is done through the University of Kentucky, and it's a similar concept, but it's done just for Kentucky. And because Danville and Covington would be the two pilot programs to do this, we were awarded an additional $700, more than what we asked for, and that would include an additional $366 of local match. So, I want to make you aware of that and make sure that's okay. Yeah? Okay.
Forty-four, sixty-six?
Yes, yes. So, the total, the second part of this is the Old Wilderness Road for 4,800, and I have learned that that was once called Magrodi Street.
Magrodi?
Magrodi Street. And because it is the only African-American neighborhood, we, we may end up naming it after the original street, I don't know, but that's $4,800 with a local match. So, all in all, the total, total project for both of these combined is $11,166.67. Do you have any questions? Oh, yes, there is one big thing. With Ruskin Arc, you would have had to pay somewhere between $1,000 and $2,500 a year in a membership basis. This is going to be free to Danville forever because we were one of the pilot programs, so there is a much bigger benefit. Thank you. Yeah.
I have a question. Julie, on the Old Wilderness Historic District?
Yeah.
How does, how does that work to the residents? Does it require them to do anything from that point, the property owner?
No, no, and I should have said that when you're on the National Register, it doesn't really do anything, put any protections on your building. It does open up tax credits, which is, is a huge financial incentive to fix your property up. It could be up to 50%, 60% of the renovation costs, which is a pretty big deal. Does not save the building from being torn down. It does not save the building from being modified, but if the state or the federal government were to come in and say, we want to straighten that road, and so, we're going to have to move these properties or tear them down, they have to pay mitigation funds to the city of Danville for the loss. So, you would get an incentive if they did have to do something with that road, so. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Okay, and these are CLG funds. I don't know if I told you that, but it's one of the benefits.
Julie, what was your role in all this?
I wrote the grants just as part of the Architectural Heritage Board.
And, and I think it's neat that even though you may work somewhere else other than Danville, you are a resident of this community.
I live here, yeah, yeah.
And you do, you do volunteer your time.
I did, yeah.
And we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Especially when you bring home the money.
Yeah, that's always fun. Any other questions? I think we have to have this in by the end of the month. It is due by 31st.
Do I hear a motion?
We can do that.
I'll move to approve Resolution 2017-07-24-02.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry and Commissioner Cottle. Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, chair will call the question. All in favor of the motion or resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item nine is the collection agreement. This is Resolution 2017-07-24-03. Michelle? You're on board here, dear.
Before you have a Resolution 2017-07-24-03, which is a resolution approving the agreement between the city of Danville and the Collection Clearing House of America. It's a collection company that we have vetted, and this has been over a year process of us looking at different collection companies, what they could do for us. This one allows us to, we only pay them if they collect money. We don't pay them a dime if we don't collect any money, and it's based on a percentage that. They also have several major clients here in Danville already, so they already have a good database of names that they can pull from that will help us maybe do some extra collections. I've spoken with them probably a dozen times. Bridgette has spoken with them several times also, whereas, you know, we also send parking tickets to them, not just utility information.
Do I hear a motion?
Does she know what the percent is? What's the percent of the collections?
It's in there, it's 30.
It's, it's 20, 20, 30, and 40 percent that they take.
Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval of Resolution 2017-07-24-03.
Thanks, Commissioner Cottle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Commissioner Terry. We're in discussion.
Have we used somebody before?
Yes, we currently use another company. We gave them a six, over a six-months notice that we wanted to, and we asked them for another proposal. They never received, we never received one. We've asked orally and written.
In the...
And how does this compare to who we're currently using?
The percentages are less, and we feel that their database and their, being a larger company, they'll be able to be a little bit more active.
Is there monetary value you would estimate on this?
No, just because our current collections is nil from the other company pretty much recently. So, all we would be turning in would be collections that are significantly overdue and haven't, of course, haven't got water in their name again, so it'd be people that's actually moved outside of Danville.
So, in the past, we've not been able to collect that, or we've not collected it, and now, we anticipate greater success, correct?
We're hoping for greater success.
Okay. Well, we're like money in the bank, for sure.
Even if it's 40% taken off the top, it still beats zero.
Right. We have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Seeing none, chair will call the question. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item 10 is Resolution 2017-07-24-04. This is the Grant Administration Contract Award. Mr. Coffey?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Tied to the EDA grant application, we're required to have a specified administrator. We issued the RFP, received two respondents, Hunter Consulting and Community and Economic Development Associates. Hunter Consulting was much cheaper, and also the high-strength firm when reviewed. The resolution accepts the proposal by Hunter Consulting. Would, would have one minor change on the resolution text. The second paragraph says, whereas the city previously received proposals from vendors engaged with Brevira, that should be HDR engineers.
I move for approval of Resolution 2017-07-24-04.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. We're in discussion. Earl, does this, does this come out of the $980,000, or is this out of general fund?
Comes out of the $980,000.
Okay.
It's a component of the grant itself.
Okay.
They anticipate that in the award.
Thank you. Any questions or comments further? Seeing none, chair will call the question. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, resolution carries. Item 11 is the Sewer Rate Study Discussion. Welcome back, Ms. Allen.
Thank you. Mayor Commissioners, I think you have a copy of the report I prepared, and I'm, you know, at, at your preference, do you have questions for me? Would you like for me to go through it? It's not, not the most exciting thing you'll ever read, but...
Is there any new information that you would give us tonight that you didn't give us two, two weeks ago?
No, I, the, the suggestions are probab, there may be one or two more suggestions than there were last time, if you would like for me to go over those.
What's your pleasure, Commissioner?
I think just for informational purposes, maybe we should go through all of the suggestions just real, just quickly.
Okay, the first place, the first place they appear is the second, the second page of the executive summary. The first one is really something that you guys have already done. I, I don't know exactly what stage it, it is in, but you have invested in new water meters and the, and the billing software that gives you a lot of capability and a lot of opportunities to, to, if you looked at the report, you'll hear me say, refine the functionalization. It just, just means getting your expenses in the, in the places that they need to be so that the rate analysts can see them and assign them to where they need to be. So, number one is a, is a, is a huge step forward, and so, I, I think Earl has probably talked to you about that before. Number two is sampling... So I think Earl has probably talked to you about that before. Number two is sampling the wastewater. And in this report, I go on about sampling for compliance versus sampling for operational information. And you guys are in compliance with your permit most of the time. No major deficiencies whatsoever. But a little bit more thorough sampling of the influent versus the effluent will tell you a whole lot more about what your plan is doing for you, you know, the removals that you get.
That is linked to, if I'm going to jump in there real quick, that's linked to really number 10. One of the things she and I had talked about, and if I may, Connie,
Sure.
The, our operators traditionally test for compliance with our permit. And what, in short, linking those two, she, her suggestion was adding staff that is, that better aids our existing superintendent of the wastewater system in administering the fatsol and grease program, for example, so that there are contributors to grease in the central sewer system. We need to monitor those with more efficiency. Some of that may include testing and sampling. So we need to expand our operational testing, not for compliance, or not just for control of cleaning the water that we have, but so that we can properly allocate system expenses for collection services. For example, wastewater rehab folks have to go out and do specific work in areas where you have a grease contributor. So we have to do certain sampling in the system to determine where that occurs, who is contributing to that grease, so that we can better allocate collection expenses, not just plant expenses as a department, if that makes sense. So those two really are linked. Is that fair, Connie?
Yes, absolutely.
And it goes well beyond just fatsol and grease. Fatsol and grease are the ones that's easiest to understand. You've got contributors to phosphorus. You can link that into the stormwater utility and that testing of Clark's Run and background phosphorus. And there's a lot of detailed environmental sampling that we can do to enhance our cost allocation. And so therefore, it's easy to see that we don't have staff that thinks in that way currently. And so that's where those come from.
What, what, what are you saying? Something in grease? I could've been...
Fats, oil, and grease.
Oh, oh.
It's kind of like my kids make fun of me for saying Ohio. I can't say Ohio correctly. I say Ohio.
Something like Tyner coming out in your house.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Blackwater.
And he covered number three. The only thing I'd add to that is phosphorus is new to your permit. You're in compliance, of course, but you need to build a database because if, you know, if EPA ever tightens up, you're going to have to go upstream and find your contributors. And, you know, you'll need a good data, you'll need a baseline phosphorus concentration in your effluent to help you there. Number four talks about your industrial pretreatment program, the IPT acronym. You have three people on it now that may, you know, you just need to do a reassessment there. You know, maybe that's all you need on it. I have an inclination, there probably might be a few more you need to put on that program. And without going into industrial pretreatment, that's a whole different context. What it, how it applies to this report is you regularly sample those people on your IPT program, and you can see if they're giving you extra strength waste or metals or anything like that. But as, as I put together these spreadsheets, I needed to know what your industrial base was giving you. And I didn't get, there wasn't very much information. And one step further, how that, why that matters is if the industrial class is causing costs and we can't see them, then those costs stay in the common pot, and everybody has to pay for them. So we want to try, you know, in our ever, never-ending effort to assign costs, we have to find them. And, you know, this sampling, again, helps us find them.
So then to continue on that previous statement, items two, three, four, and five are really linked to number 10. And what you would like to do is better, the sampling protocol helps you understand all those things so that you can pull out customers that are now lumped into residential and commercial. You can pull out customers out of that pot, and that do not necessarily qualify under the state permit program for an industrial pretreatment permit. And you create another class eventually so that their cost would be pulled out of your common pool, which is your residential and your commercial users, and into that additional. So eventually, you'll have another, right now, you have residential, commercial, industrial, and Parable in Junction City. Eventually, you would have residential, commercial, and then you would have another class, and then you would have industrial. So eventually, you would have another rate that someone else will pay. But in the end, what her effort has highlighted is that we just don't have enough sampling to really prove that position. So now that cost is lumped into the residential, commercial class. Does that help a little bit from somebody else, too?
Does that make the residential rates go down?
It would eventually, and not necessarily go down, but it would affect them positively, yes.
Number five is pretty much what he's talking about. This extra strength class that I would encourage you to start. There's a table in there that gives you the kind of businesses or industries that would be in that. And they typically give you higher BOD, total suspended solids, phosphorus. And when your engineers designed your plant, they designed it to work in a certain range. And if you have a customer that gives you those pollutants outside that efficient range, it causes you costs. And we need to find them so that we can charge them those surcharges to recover that cost. Number six and number seven talk about functionalization, which I'm sure Earl has heard me say that a million times. But it is, again, just noting more carefully where your costs are coming from so that we can recover it from the ones who caused it. And future capital, you know, Earl knows exactly what I'm talking about, you know, how he's already breaking things up, like with your water plant. He has already broken stages to where they can be functionalized better in the future. Number eight, I talked a little bit last time I was here about your capital improvements program and how it should roughly equal your annual depreciation. And number eight, the suggestion for number eight is just keep striving for that. Number nine talks about wholesale customer contracts. The two wholesale customers that are going to come online are not PSC-regulated facilities, utilities. So, you know, you, if they were, there would be a lot more suggestions on here, but they're not. But you still need to make sure certain things are in the contracts. The ability to charge a surcharge, I would highly recommend that. And even though you may never, ever need to, but the ability to assign a peak, a peak capacity. And then, as Earl talked about, number 10, Earl, this is a compliment, Earl, not, but Earl does a great job. I mean, he's got a lot to say grace over. And your city's beautiful, and your city's growing, and it's a place people like to be, and the Public Works Department is a big part of that. And he, we could, it's hard for him to look at some of these things that I've brought out in this report because he has a big job. I mean, Danville's big enough to totally tax him, but, you know, you don't have an engineering staff. So he has a tough job, and he does a great job, and Michelle as well. And they've both helped me out a whole lot with these cost of service studies. So, anything else?
Questions, comments? Every community has to have a sewer treatment plant, yes?
Yes.
Is ours any more complex than any of the others?
No, it's not. For Earl and I, and any type of activated sludge plant is pretty simple. Bugs eat bugs that eat waste, and that's how it works. And you have an oxidation ditch, and it works even better than just a plain extended aeration plant. Your plant works fantastic. I mean, it, you have, I don't want to belabor the point, but you're in compliance. You really don't know what your customers are giving you, but yet you're in total compliance. So it works very well.
I just had Donna give you a memo that I wanted to give last week. We wanted to invest more time in the, we wanted to put more text to it, but felt like this was fairly succinct and would identify the necessary reasons for the results of the cost of service study to be implemented. First, and Michelle's welcome to expand on it, is just simply the financial considerations of the utility as a whole. The, the central sewer system is much different from the water utility in that the sewer system must operate on a break-even basis. You can't really build a reserve. You can't really operate on a return basis like you can on the water utility side. It's restricted under KRS. But at the same time, the bond ordinances also require certain ratios be met, revenue to debt and expense ratios. And what this cost of service study did was evaluate us under our policies and our guidances. Also, it took into consideration certain things operationally. On a sewer system, you have reliability and capacity in the same way that we do on the water plant. The wastewater plant was upgraded in 1998. Identified on the memo is the easiest thing to highlight, which is the disinfection system. It's a UV system. That ultraviolet system is the barrier between discharging biological elements into the stream and inactivating those on their discharge. And that system is, was put in in 98. It is outdated. It is extremely expensive to operate in terms of power demand, but also in terms of just to work on it. All the components of it essentially at this time are no longer, we have to make a lot of pieces or have those made by the manufacturer Trojan. So to replace that, that's somewhere between a $250,000 and $500,000 investment. That is why we identified in our long-term capital plan and upgraded the wastewater plant. And that's why we have asked you to hire HDR to look at the system overall, to determine, help determine the areas where we are weak in terms of reliability. And this rate study was, sets about funding that capital as it's projected today. So in the same way that you, the commission voted to increase the water rates with the water plant really impact a rate study, this is akin to that. It doesn't include some of that capital cost tied to the wastewater plant. We hope it would be all of it. But raising those now programs your capital costs that we perceive at the plant so that you, the plant is not just a pretty plant that operates good, but that it's actually reliable long-term. The other things are capacity. The bigger capacity issues is not necessarily at the plant itself, although we could increase capacity, and we'll look for ways to do that as HDR completes their evaluation. But also in the utility system, in the collection system, where central sewer overflows exist. The Division of Water has a longstanding program to eliminate central sewer overflows. We have been engaged through a central sewer overflow program to eliminate those. And the, so one of the, one of the things that the Division of Water does when they come in and starts to assess whether the city is serious about eliminating those is whether or not our rates are adequate to fund our operations and fund the capital that we have on the books to maintain those sewer lines. The cities in Kentucky who have not maintained a liquid central sewer program have ended up in fairly serious enforcement actions with the EPA. The city will, the city was given a violation for our overflows this year, and that is under review. The enforcement of those violations are under review by the Division of Water now. And so what I would suggest to you is please understand that the central sewer system is a, it's very serious. It's very serious with the Division of Water. It's very seriously, serious on its environmental impact and adjusting the rates. Now, allows us to go into that continued process with the Division of Water with a different, a different view from them. They will look at you differently as we go into enforcement with them. They have indicated that anyway. And so certainly, I can't really quantify that very well today in front of that future enforcement action. But other than to say it is coming, we, you know, and it is inevitable. I think Campbellsville just settled with the Division of Water, and I think they're moving on to other communities, and we're definitely on their list. The federal folks, and the easy one to point to, if the, if it gets away from the state, is the federal consent decrees in Lexington and Louisville and Paducah and some of the other cities where Winchester, for example, where they've agreed to spend hundreds of millions of dollars versus rate increases and continuing to fund your capital program. This is proactive. Those communities, some of them didn't necessarily, I'm not going to say they weren't proactive, but they didn't necessarily stave off the consent decree from the EPA. So certainly, one of the things we want to accomplish with this is that. We want to continue to show improvement, continue to show dedication towards full compliance capacity-wise in the collection system and at the plant so that when the EPA is here, they look at us as willing participants in compliance with the Clean Water Act. Hope that helps a little bit and didn't ramble too bad.
So the, you never ramble, Earl.
It's easy to talk for a while. There's a lot to it, so.
So the questions that I get from citizens are, why is such a drastic increase at one time? My question is, can we do it incrementally? And why is Parables' increase so much higher?
Parables is unfortunate, really. They have, the, go back to what we talked about under financial considerations. The central sewer system is on a break-even basis. Also, the central sewer must be a cost of service-based rate. So there's a reason why Kentucky Americans not in the sewer business, really. And that is that it is hard for them to absorb cost and wash it out over a mass area of customers when there's a very specific cost to provide service to a group of customers. So, for example, in Parable, they have their own wastewater plant, right? There's only 400 customers that are on that wastewater plant. Those 400 customers have to bear the expenses of the wastewater system down their collection and also the plant so that Danville citizens aren't paying for that. And so then necessarily, their rate's different than the Danville central sewer rate and also the Junction City central sewer rate.
Junction City also has their own plant?
They don't have their own plant. They have their own cost tied to their system that is unique to Junction City. For example, they had dead service when the system was acquired. You can't, it is not necessarily correct to distribute that, those expenses to the city of Danville customers, right? So those costs will necessarily be borne by the customers that were existing and in the service area of the utility system in Junction City, which is why there is a rate that is different than in Parable and also in Danville.
So theoretically, if more people in Parable got onto the system, their cost per capita would be lower?
Yes, sir.
So this is the first study, really, that's ever been done?
This is the first study, full study, that has been done since 1998. And we have survived on the annual COLA. So we, you know, we have been able to endure. We've talked about, a little bit about this recently, even to Connie, but one of the things that we've learned, that I've learned, is that on the utility, the utility of Danville's been here since 1890, right? And so... And so a lot of times we look at, um, things like, well, this is a big jump, this is 20, why not 20 years? But it's really, the, the scale for the utility is, is really 100 years, or 110 years now, 120 years now, whatever. And so what happens is, it takes, it, it takes three, three years to build a water plant, right? So you're not going to have a rate adjustment every year on the water plant, so you're going to necessarily do one every two years or, or when appropriate. And, and at the same time, while Dammel was focused on upgrading the water plant, it is now transitioning into upgrading the wastewater system, making sure those attention, the, the details tied to the wastewater systems up to far. So it's just in, in, in the overall history for our city, it's, we're getting to the wastewater now, right? And unfortunately, it, it, it has been since 1998, so the jump is bigger probably than it would have been 10 years ago. But at the same time, if you would have done one 10 years ago, most likely you'd be doing one again now anyway, right? So the net result, I'm not sure really changes necessarily, but the jump is definitely impactful, no doubt.
But we're not going to wait another 20 years to do the, to do a study?
No, that's one of the things that, that we'd like to do, and one of the things we've talked a lot about with Connie and on the water side, too, is, is be more programmatic. So some of the things we'd like to do in-house operationally is, is make it so that, uh, our information necessary for us to do a rate study, water, water usage, water analysis, is more efficiently produced so that the, the rate studies can occur more efficiently. Connie would verify that our rate study's ve- fairly laborious on staff's time now, based because of the information system that, the way it was set up, right? So going through the process and the water utility, now the center sewer system, w- we will do, as we finish this, is continue to implement the changes that she's recommended so that the next time it's much easier to do, and so it, you're going to do it more likely, right? And, and so certainly, it's, I would not recommend waiting 20 years. I mean, it, it's, you know, we did that necessarily because that's how much staff we had, and we're moving through processes and that kind of thing, but today, we need to be more efficient and, and it be a continuous process, really.
Earl, it's my understanding that this is the first time that we have had a, a study done independently of staff?
Yeah, that's a fact, yeah.
So in the past, when staff has done this 20, 25, 30 years ago, who performed that and, and what criteria did they use? If, if you know?
Well, i- it was done in-house. It was done by the city manager and city engineer, and, uh, we sent that to Connie, and, and she, uh, evaluated that in, in, in detailing, I, you know, on some level she evaluated. I'm not saying she got in, reproduced the numbers, but, uh...
I think it was water only, though.
Yeah, we gave that to her for reference, really, and, and the, the last major sewer rate change occurred with the upgrade of the plant in 98, and was really, uh, driven by the, the, uh, table that Rural Development produces or KIA produces. When they, when you borrow money, rates have to be a certain benchmark. And so, uh, the sewer rate itself was really guided based on the debt service that was being incurred in 1998. I don't know that the sewer rate by itself exclusively was, has really been analyzed since before that.
Find any evidence of a cost of service study for the sewer?
Yeah.
Well, th- this commission has had to shoulder some pretty heavy lifting here over the last two years. Is it a fair statement? So the, the question that I think is probably on everyone's mind is, what happens if we decide not to do this or to kick it down the road as others might have done in the past?
Well, um, in, in the, like, the first paragraph of the executive summary, I think you took in approximately $3 million in fiscal year 2016, and you spent $3.5 million, and you didn't invest anything in your capital and keeping up your renewals, replacements. I mean, you, you, your sewer utility will die if you don't do something quickly. And I don't want to be overly dramatic, but you can't, I can't spend more money than I make, so, you know, a utility can't spend more money than it makes. It'll catch up with them. And, and also, you have bond, you have conditions of your bonds for both water and sewer, and if those bonds, I know with Rural Development, and you do have some Rural Development bonds, and they require that sewer pays for sewer and water pays for water. So, um, you had a little help in the past in paying the bills, but, um, you're really required by your bond ordinance to make sure each utility is healthy on its own.
So we would be technically in violation of bond covenants?
That would be my opinion. That's probably Michelle. Michelle is reaching for her microphone.
Well, uh, I think it's, uh, Kentucky Water that says that you ha, that sewer has to be at least break even, so she's just said your sewer's not break even. It's, that goes on over and under on break even. And so, uh, if it wasn't for your water and your general fund, your, your sewer, your sewer would not be, wouldn't have paid its bills. So you ha, you have to look at that. And the other thing is in the bond covenants for RD and for our general bond ordinance, it says parity bonds have to be a, a 1.20 ratio with your revenue, and your subordinate bonds, which is what we're getting ready to do for our energy efficiency, has to be a one-to-one ratio. So what that means is whenever we borrow money for the energy efficiency for, to put the $6 million to put the new, uh, meters in the ground, we have to have a one-to-one ratio with our revenues, with our, our total bond, our total debt service, and we have to meet that before we can do it. I can't sign off on the paper. We can't, that, we can't sell bonds until we do that.
And what you're saying is, if we don't do this, our energy efficiency s- study and exercise that, that we had planned on doing stops in this, at this pro- process, at this point?
If you don't do some kind of increase.
And if my understanding correctly, that, that when you said water pays for water and wastewater pays for wastewater, you know, some, the, the question comes, well, can't you take some of the profit out of the water system to pay for the shortfall in the wastewater system? And I'm assuming the answer, based on what you've said, is clearly no.
And, and the reason particular bond covenant?
And so then we also have to look forward to, to the sewer plant that we already have said that we're going to try to do in the next budget year, uh, what we need to do for it, which will be have probably parity and non-parity bonds. Hopefully, we'll get RD bonds and, so we'll have to have something in place for that also.
And, and one more thing, and, and Michelle, you'll have to, you'll have to clean up what I'm getting ready to say, but you have a good bond rating right now. Is it double?
Yes.
And if you don't pay your bill, that, that bond rating is going to go down, and then your debt service will go up for any future loan?
These will be the questions that we'll get asked during our bond rating.
Is this, it, was this included in the energy audit project, or is this separate from the energy audit?
Separate.
The energy audit project, we, we said that the biggest part of that project is putting meters in the ground, so that is considered, even though we'll issue geo-bonds, it's considered utility debt, so it'll be in the one-to-one ratio of a subordinate bonds. We have to pledge revenues from the utility fund. So when we did the energy audit, we said we would have to make sure that we met all bond covenants to do that.
So this is separate, this is not included in the energy audit, really?
It, you have to make the bond covenant so you can, so that we can even, so RD will be okay with us.
To do one, to do the other?
Yes.
What, what happened if we were to do this incrementally, or is that even an option?
You could do partially incrementally, uh, but it's probably not, we, we learned with the water revenue, since we already know we're going to borrow money again in 2018, because we have to do something for our UV, whether we do a whole plant or we just do the UV, we have to do that, which Earl just said, that could be up to $500,000.
Yeah, you need to do something with the sludge system and, and the UV system. And the sludge, because the EPA is over, is regulating your land farm in a different way, and so necessarily, our process for handling sludge will change. So that will be, you, you, you're looking at a million dollars between the two, between the UV and the sludge handling system.
Not counting whatever else that we do.
Yeah, most likely, you're going to end up at a million dollars there.
So, uh, we, we learned that with the water plant, that doing it beforehand worked out great. We were able to go smoothly on our cash flow and our financing. We didn't have to do a second interim, interim loan to just for our part portion that we'll have, that RD will require us to do. If we'd had to do that, then it would have caused our water rates, when we raised our water rates, to even be higher because we would have, because you have to pay that loan off. There's, there's cost to any loan that you get.
And Mayor, to address your question there earlier, I would, I would agree with you in, any, any time, and I would not want to be an elected commissioner. I mean, I, I don't envy you all at all, and, and, you know, I know, be, because, I mean, the decision you all are made, or, I mean, you know, they're, you're the stopgap. I mean, you, you all have big decisions to make, and, and it seems like, and we've talked about this as, as staff before, but it seems like the commission before the commission before was the parking garage, and then the next commission had to make a decision about the police department, and where they're going to be housed long-term. And then the next commission had to make he- heavy decisions tied to the water plant. You know, how, how do you handle that? And then, then they had to ma- make a decision to adjust rates on the retail customers 43% in front of construction of the water plant, right? And, and it seems like that every commission, over the, over the last little bit, and has had big decisions they've had to make, and I don't know that if it's just the timing and history, where, you know, when you go back to the 60s, when all the existing facilities in the cities were, were upgraded the last time, you know, the water plant was upgraded in the 50s and 60s, the, the wastewater plant on Terrell Drive was, was changed in the 60s, and, and then, you know, the fire station across the street and City Hall at the time, and the, the current dispatch, all those were built in the same tenure period, right? So it, you know, it may just be that we're, we're at the end of the 40, 50-year useful life of a lot of facilities that the city invested in. I don't know. I don't know why the timing is the way it is, but, but, you know, that's where we're at today.
It's like owning an old house, there's always going to be something.
Very similar to that, I would say, yeah. It's a big city now, Dammel's a, a big town. There's a lot of, you know, we, we have joked internally and, and I, you know, Tom and I probably less about this point, but definitely Erica and I a lot about, you know, we have unlimited amount of work we can do just on con- concrete curbs. So, I mean, how, how many concrete curbs do you want us to fix over potholes? So what we, we have to prioritize, which we're fixing on every given day. But, I mean, if you strictly want to tell Public Works with our current staff loading to fix concrete curbs, we can, we can occupy 100% of our time doing that. And, and that doesn't account for all those other things that the city has to deal with and, and that are, that become hard decisions. Stormwater on the corner of, you know, Broadway and First Street, you know, we're working through that, doing our underground investigation now. So there's, you know, it's, it's, it's a city. I mean, there's a lot to it.
Well, like you said, we, we have to think 50 and sometimes even 100 years ahead, and that's a hard thing to wrap your brain around.
And I guess the thing that stands out to me is, if I understand this correctly, speak now, if we don't do this, then the, um, energy study and our plans for that energy efficiency stops. Mr. Scott?
For the most part, I'd say.
On the utility side?
The largest part on the utility side is the installation of the new water meters and the improvements for that. And to me, and Earl touched upon this earlier, the question of the, uh, enforcing enforcement by EPA on the overflows and so forth, and the consent decrees, where millions of dollars are required to be spent by communities. I mean, to do a, just a token increase doesn't, uh, doesn't go very far in terms of forwarding off those sorts of mandated adjustments either. So to me, the preferred approach is to make the professional recommendations made and class allocation, and to enable the city to, to position itself to continue to make those improvements that will reduce our costs rather than having to not do that.
And so we, we are being proactive on, on some new EPA regulations that we know are coming that would probably cost us more in the long run if we were to be in violation?
It's not, it's not new regulations. It's the Clean Water Act in the 70s. It is the EPA first dealing with big cities, Cincinnati, Louisville, dealing with combined sewers, working their way through into smaller utilities. They are getting to us, and they are, so much so that they did issue our violation on our overflows this spring, and that is in enforcement now. And so, um, sometime this year, we expect them to dictate to us what the terms of that enforcement action, that, what, what they'll take. We'll, we'll have a penalty, and we'll have, I'm sure, uh, you know, other actions. We'll have to do some type of, uh, corrective action plan, I feel sure, and, and, you know, so it's just part of going through a violation, where, where you're issued a violation for any regulation, much like we did with the disinfection byproduct rule. We had to publish on the CCR the, the, the warning, for example. Uh, that's the corrective action on that violation. Center sewer overflows, they, uh, have taken a much, much more proactive position, uh, with smaller communities over the last five years, which means they're getting to us. They're getting to the small towns in Kentucky that, and like I said, they just, they just entered into an agreed order with Campbellsville, um, I think, last six months, if I understood correctly. So they're, they're working their way into the smaller utilities, and we're definitely on that list, and this is proactive, so that when they show up, since our violation, we can definitely say, look, the city commission's already taken action, so would, would we hope that'd be more favorable, uh, in terms of what they make us do? Yeah, we would, yeah, we would definitely expect that.
And it would be catastrophic if our sewer's plant were to go down?
Be pretty bad, yeah.
And what if our UV system went down? Are we in danger of, of the UV system failing?
Yes. Yeah, we, we, we work on it every day, you know? I mean, that, that, it's an old electrical system, and, and we got it, works now, and it works correctly now and all, all those things, but it's, it's, it's an electrical system, and, you know, there's going to be a point where if something breaks, it's going to be a challenge to get fixed. And, you know, we got good staff out there, just like we do at the water plant, you know, they're focused, they're looking ahead, and they're trying to overcome that before it breaks, right? And, and, you know, I can't necessarily predict, stand here and say that's an awesome system that's going to work, you know? I'm not going to put the guarantee to that one, that, for sure, but it's, it's working now, and, you know, staff works on it regularly.
How would a new system operate?
Uh, it's just new technology. It, it's, uh, let me think of something that...
Hopefully, less, uh, electrical intensive?
The biggest thing is, is your energy efficiency of it. It, it's, it's a, it's a UV system. There are no LED system that, that accomplishes the same thing. The, the, uh, it's little things like hats made, and then, then, too, it's submerged in the, the wastewater stream. There's seals to those things that leak and get into your internal electrical issues, and your cost of that stuff is not $200, it's $5,000 for things. It's not, you know, it's, it's not a normal, it's not like a light fixture here.
And, and there are some opportunities in these suggestions to actually bring more revenue in, you know, to the utility. And in the end, when you, when you peel the onion back, it's just expenses divided by volume sold. You know, there's, that's, that's oversimplistic, but anything you can do to reduce the expenses is going to lower the, what you have to pass on to the, to the customers.
I, I've been trying to study the ordinance again and listen to the discussion, so, did you all turn to page two of 1898, so I can make sure that we all get a, understand that what we're saying?
I want everybody to understand that this comes from an ordinance, it's a very old ordinance. These rates have been with COLA going up, so they're not jumping as much as this ordinance says.
They're not as what now?
They're not jumping up as much as the ordinance says. The ordinance is based on a very old ordinance, and they've had COLA increases through the years. And so they're not jumping from this...
That don't require publication?
Yeah, that, yes, absolutely.
So the, the COLA increases are not reflected in the numbers that are showing being revised?
On page two, in section one of page two?
That's accurate, because as the rates have not changed since 1997, there have been cost of living increase, increases annually, but those numbers aren't required to be documented in an ordinance format, because you have a right to, to charge those, and those are just reflected in the next cycle of bills.
So the, so the $2 per 100 cubic foot of water? So, the $2 per 100 cubic foot of water, well, not water waste, this increase, this showing a $2 increase is not accurate?
No, it was 4.116.
Okay.
Last, yeah.
The 6.349 that's jumping to 12.69 is not accurate then, right?
Not in actual rates, this is for this ordinance, because this ordinance hasn't been redone, because it wasn't required because of the COLA.
What you're looking at is a snapshot, two different snapshots.
I understand, but.
So, you're looking at the rates, the rates that are struck in the ordinance are that was in effect in 1997.
I understand that.
So, that's what, so they are accurate as of 1997, they do not include the cost of living increases.
Right. So, the 6.349 is wrong.
It's not what you're currently charging.
Right, that's what I mean, that's wrong, right. Okay, so, the real increase is not $6 per 100 cubic foot for that one, right?
That's correct.
And then the pervert one is really not a plus four from 5.524 to 9.40, that's really not, that's not accurate, that's just what's in the ordinance.
It's because this was the last increase.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get a handle on what.
And, you know, I want to make sure we use the right words. It's accurate as of the ordinance.
Yes, that's right, but not what we're charging.
But it's not what you're currently charging.
I understand that, okay, good. All right. And then that clarifies the first section. In section 2 on that same page, wholesale industrial consumers. And if you go to the top of page 3, under, I guess that's letter A, the 449 is going down to 169?
That's right. So, others are going to be much more qualified to speak to this, but I had to wrestle with this somewhat, probably in the same position as you did in writing this.
All right.
My understanding, and I'm going to use layman's terms, because that might be helpful. The old system had a higher minimum monthly bill, but didn't properly associate cost per user. So, what the new rate hopes to reflect is a lower minimum monthly bill, but a more accurate consumption cost, based on that user's impact on the system.
So, the 4.20, I guess it's $4.20 on wholesaling consumer, in essence, over the course of a year, would generate more funds for the city than what it's been doing in the old method.
I'm assuming it will be more, it will certainly be more accurate as to what that user, how that user impacts the system.
If the usage actually stays the same for them, the amount consumed, still will generate more revenue for the city, if I'm reading it right. I'm just trying to get an FYI for us and everybody that's trying to figure this thing out.
Sure.
Is that, is that correct, that the long-term effect is that that's going to generate more funds for the, for us from wholesale and industrial consumers?
I did not do a 4,000-gallon comparison on that particular customer class, because that's not really relevant for that customer class. But yes, those, you know, and yes, it's going to generate more revenue.
So, for industrial consumer, they're going to use far more than 4,000 gallons. At 20,000 gallons, the rate is less, because what they would actually pay would be, for an industry using 20,000 gallons or less, would be less cost for them operationally than the 449 is a baseline. If you get up around 100,000 gallons, which we do have users in excess of 100,000 gallons, then somewhere between the 90,000 gallons and the 110,000 gallons is the break-even point. Above that, the users, you'll get, you'll get an increase in revenue. And below that, it's a shift of the cost from a minimum bill, which is, was a little bit arbitrary, probably inflationary, if the consumer wasn't consuming that minimum amount, right? So, the person, the industry that's water-efficient, that's just using the minimum amount, will see a more accurate cost.
Sure.
A more accurate reflection of what their burden on, or what their impact to the system is. But the big users, the ones you're really trying to capture with that industrial rate, they're paying their cost then, and they are seeing the increase, because they are taxing the system different than the lower users.
Well, and I guess my real question is, I was trying to get wrapped around my brain about a wholesale user, an industrial consumer, being charged $4.20 per 100 cubic foot, and me as a private citizen being charged $4.52 for 100 cubic feet. But I guess that's a reduction.
That's in gallons.
That's in what?
These other numbers are in gallons.
Well, not, what I'm reading, it didn't say gallons. It doesn't matter, I just assumed the 4.20 100 rate per 100 cubic foot for wholesalers and commercial consumers is about the fact that the volume gets to pay back for the city based on the.
Yeah, and in the end, Commissioner, the allocation of 169 for the minimum bill versus 449 is probably a better reflection of what their impact to the system is.
Sure.
Yeah, and said cleanly, that's.
Yeah.
Right.
I understand that, I just was trying to get to 420. Okay. And the other question is, though, I'll ask this one like I asked on the previous tax increase that we discussed. Right now, we're collecting close to half a million dollars, where we're underfunded close to half a million dollars in sewer utility income. Is that a yes?
Yes. Well, it doesn't count the lack of investment in the capital improvements program.
Yeah, that's the minimum that we're underfunded, that's not considering your depreciation.
I understand that. But I, so here's my next question here. In fiscal year 2016, in our budget, we covered that half a million dollars someplace, and then we probably didn't spend any money on capital improvements, because we didn't do any, I guess, but.
Your water, your water department covered it for you.
Covered the other.
Yeah.
And that's where we're going to run into troubles, the water department's not going to be.
Yes, absolutely.
Legally or financially.
Robbing Peter to pay Paul.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I want, well, can't do that, yeah.
No, we can.
Well, I want to go back to the last meeting two weeks ago and resend some votes that were made, but I know I can't do that one. Well, that's going to be a double whammy again, from where I sit. Yeah. Oh.
But the numbers.
I'm paying more for my sewer right now than I am for my water consumption.
That is normal in most systems.
It's normal in both, what?
In most systems.
No.
Oh, you say, oh, most systems, oh. I don't mean I have to like it, though, but okay, it might be normal. But that seems kind of contrary to me, I should be paying more for the clean water, not for the stuff that Jennifer's already polluted, for example, right?
Are there any more questions from Ms. Allen?
Wow, oh, no, no, I appreciate the study itself, I just, man.
Because if there are no more questions, any questions for her?
No.
If there are no more questions, then I'd like, seems that we need to move to the last item, which is the ordinance itself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is the first reading.
Chair will entertain a motion for the first reading of ordinance 1898.
I will make a motion that we approve first reading of ordinance 1898 pertaining to sanitary sewer collection treatment, disposal facilities, and the monthly sewer service charge for same.
Thank you, Mr. Cottle, or second?
Second.
Thank Commissioner Terry.
Well, I just wanted to reiterate the fact that these numbers, this increase is really not as alarming as it seems, because of the cost of living. This is an increase from the 1997 numbers, and not the current numbers. And I guess nobody really has the current numbers off the top of their head right here.
Those can be read, too, we do have those.
Can we, can we have those?
That's probably really beneficial.
For a better comparison.
Michelle, do you want to handle that, or do you want me to dig through this report? Well, I guess that means I'll need to look for them then, hold on a second.
The customer charge, which is, we had already discussed, instead of 270, is for residential, is 4.116.
Hold on, hold on.
On page 2?
We're on page 2, yes.
Back to page 8?
Yes.
The 246 is.
Well, the first one. The first one is 381 going to 414.
The 3814 is actually 4.116.
Okay.
The 2.467 is actually 2.644.
Say it again?
And this was based on 2016, this is not counting the COLA since 2016, because that's the year she used, was 2016.
These are as of 2016.
So, there's actually been a 3% COLA after that, after these. Mm-hmm. The, where you're changing it to 1269, it was 6.804. And the 9.40 was actually 5.920.
That's a little better. We're still looking at nearly 50%. But those are better numbers, those are current numbers.
That's 2016's numbers.
Instead of 20-year-old numbers.
Still an increase, that's a big increase. Okay, what'd you say? Especially on my little friends out, my friends out there, but I say little friends, because they're bigger than I am, but my friends out there, that's, that's an increase.
Do you have a, do you have another suggestion?
Yeah, I'm going home and eat me some dinner, think about it, but no, I don't have another suggestion, man. Wait, wait. Tom Poland, no, not Tom, Herman Kenny probably would not mind me making this statement. You know, I didn't take his job to raise taxes on my friends. I think that's all I'm talking about, 2017, so. I don't have a suggestion, that's just an editorial. And if you want to, I don't have, I don't have a suggestion, but I also don't like it.
Well, I don't like it either, but again, we can't.
Nobody's jumping for joy here.
We can't run a half a million dollar deficit every year.
And this all ties back to a unfunded mandate from 1970, what, was that Earl, for?
A lot of the expenses you have are out of the Clean Water Act of the '70s, the '76 era.
'76.
Captured, captured the discharges to wastewater plant more effectively.
So, that's not the last time this is going to be coming around, I'm sure.
No, please don't wait another 20 years.
Yeah, that's for sure. I don't, I don't come back around till I'm completely retarded, how about that?
Well, at the end of the day, if we're running editorialize, at the end of the day, I hope we leave this, I hope we leave our tenure and this community in better shape than the day we accepted the office. We have a motion, a second, any further comments or questions? Sing none, all in favor of the first reading of ordinance 1898.
Do you have to roll call that?
Yes, please.
We need a roll call?
Yes, please.
Do you have to read it?
He read it.
Oh.
Commissioner Atkins?
I'm going to vote no.
Commissioner Terry? Yes. Mayor Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
I would like to vote no, but see that's an option, so, yes.
Any need for an executive session?
Yes, sir, we do have a need for an executive session to discuss personnel matters.
It's a good thing we all checked our guns before we came in here. Do I hear a motion that we move into executive session for personnel matters?
Move we go into executive session to discuss personnel matters pursuant to KRS 61810F.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, like sign.
Mayor, we need a second on that motion, I'm sorry.
Oh, did it hear a second?
Second.
You aren't listening, Stephen.
Stop it.
Can't get out of my mouth.
All in favor, say aye.
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 We are in executive session. Motion that we move back into regular session.
So move.
Second.
Thanks, Commissioner Terry, Commissioner Cottle, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, we are in regular session. Ms. Pete?
Staff would ask that we, that you accept the resignations of Stephanie McDonald, data entry clerk at 911, Matthew Sparks, 911 dispatcher, Josh Owens, police officer, and Scott Jeffries, wastewater rehab operator, as presented.
Do hear a motion to that effect.
So move, but with regrets.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins, how about a second?
Second.
Thanks, Commissioner Terry, discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Pose like sign, motion carries. Any further business to come before us? Sing none?
Remove for adjournment.
Motion made?
Second.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, sir.